Maverick City is mine.
Good evening everyone, we will officially call this Mayanville City Council workshop to order here at 5:00 PM. We have two executive sessions in the workshop, I'll go ahead and read these out. City council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.071 consultation with attorney and Texas government code section 551.072 deliberation regarding real property to discuss the following Russell Street right-of-way abandonment, Big Hoar and Cantina. And city council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.087 deliberation regarding economic development negotiation and Texas government code section 551.071 consultation with attorney to discuss the following memorandum of understanding with MUD 83 and Hillwood Enterprises LP. And we will head into executive session here at 5:01 PM.
Maverick City is mine.
Good evening everyone, we will officially call this Mayanville City Council workshop to order here at 5:00 PM. We have two executive sessions in the workshop, I'll go ahead and read these out. City council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.071 consultation with attorney and Texas government code section 551.072 deliberation regarding real property to discuss the following Russell Street right-of-way abandonment, Big Hoar and Cantina. And city council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas government code section 551.087 deliberation regarding economic development negotiation and Texas government code section 551.071 consultation with attorney to discuss the following memorandum of understanding with MUD 83 and Hillwood Enterprises LP. And we will head into executive session here at 5:01 PM.
We'll reconvene from executive session.
You brought it back?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gaspar. He's trying to get back on council there. All right, council will reconvene from executive session at 6:06 PM, having taken no action. And we will go ahead and we will step right into the regular session. And we have seven of seven members present. The regular session will begin at 6:07 PM. And we will start with the invocation. Is Pastor Terrence Campbell here? Yes, sir, I see you come forward, pastor. You'd like to say a few words and lead us in the prayer. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. You can come right up to the podium and on the microphone. That way we can hear you.
I want to thank each of you for your service to this great city and the work that you do. Let us pray. Father, we thank you today for this day you've blessed us with. Father, we pray the words of Proverbs 11, verse 14. Where there is no guidance, a people fall; but in an abundance of counselors, there is safety. Lord, thank you for the abundance of this team of people, Lord God, who are serving in this capacity, who care about our city, Lord God, who desire to see those who are in need cared for, Lord, to see, to make plans for the future. And so, we pray for your continued wisdom and your guidance. We pray for your continued protection and safety, God, upon our residents. Lord, we thank you for your goodness and your grace toward us all. Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we bless you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, pastor. Next, we have our inspirational reading from Councilman David Lance.
Good evening. Tonight, I have chosen a poem I'd like to share. And then, I'll follow that up with a little bit of words about the poem. This is by Douglas Mellock. It is called "Good Timber." The tree that never had to fight for sun and sky and air and light, but stood out in the open plain and always got its share of rain. Never became a forest king, but lived and died a scrubby thing. The man who never had to toil to gain and farm his patch of soil, who never had to win his share of sun and sky and light and air, never became a manly man, but lived and died as he began. Good timber does not grow with ease. The stronger wind, the stronger trees. The further sky, the greater length. The more the storm, the more the strength. By sun and cold, by rain and snow, in trees and men, good timbers grow. Where thickest lies the forest growth, we find the patriarchs of both. And they hold counsel with the stars, whose broken branches sow the scars. Of many winds and muts of strife, this is the common law of life. So, this is comparison of trees and men, and the way good trees of good timber and strong men are formed through hardships and struggle of life. By describing two types of trees and men. First, there are those who readily, given everything they have, they need to survive. This type of person or tree never has to worry about where the food or water is going to come from. They have been coddled and most likely do not live good or full lives as they should. On the other hand, there are trees and men who must fight from birth to survive. Their broken branches and scars are evidence of their ability to survive and become forest kings. Those who live through broken branches and storms become good timber. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Next, if you can, please stand and join me in saying the pledges. First, to the US flag, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag, honor the Texas people.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. So, we're going to do our presentations next. And we will be doing the ceremonial oath of office for Councilwoman Carmen Robey Robinson for place four. All right, you want them to come forward with you?
Sure, guys, come on up.
All right, family, family can come on forward. You guys can join her up here.
They're like... Or you can stay back there.
No, no, you guys gotta come forward.
Come on up, come on up.
You guys gotta come forward, come on up.
Special day.
See, now he's not going to want to leave me, though.
All right, if you guys want to join behind the councilwoman here? If you want your husband and son to come forward right next to you? All right, everyone squeeze in here. All right. Councilwoman, if you'll raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carmen Robey Robinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council Place Four.
Of City Council Place Four.
Of the city of Mamvel.
Of the city of Mamvel.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Will preserve.
Will preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And of the charter.
And the ordinances.
And of the ordinances.
Of this city.
Of this city.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
So, if you guys want to stay here, you'll take a photo together. We'll do one with everyone, then one with you, your husband, and your son. And then, you'll join us back over there. Oh, thank you, good catch. Thank you.
I'll make it work.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Do you want photos for the councilwoman?
I mean, while they walk in.
All right, come on, you guys, if you want to take a photo, come on.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
There goes his hat.
Dance it.
Ten seconds later.
Man of the people. One, two, three. One, two, three. Yes. One more. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, well, congratulations, Councilwoman. Thank you to her family and friends for being here tonight to honor and recognize the Councilwoman for her hard work over these past few months. What we want to do next is a recognition. A few months ago, some local high school, junior high students reached out because they wanted to get involved in their local government and helping shape the future of their city. And so, they wanted to form a Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. And we've been meeting for the past few months. And it's going to run through the summer, but primarily from the beginning of the school year till the end of the school year. And I believe you guys wrap up school, is it this week you finish? When's your last day?
Okay.
Okay, so they're very, very close. So, we wanted to take some time to honor the inaugural members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. So, we have a certificate of recognition for each of them. I'll have you guys come up by name. We'll take a photo together. And then, Kate or Ryan, if one of you guys wants to say a few words, we'll let you guys speak. One of you's got to speak. So, you guys are going to have to figure out which one's going to say a few words about why you wanted to start this, okay? So, the first member of the committee that we want to recognize is Kate Moody. Here we go, we can clap for her. Just going to hold these all in one hand, we'll make it work. All right, now, we have Ms. Horn next. Thank you, Ms. Horn, round of applause. And let me read off what this says as well. So, this reads that "Your commitment to civic engagement, leadership, and community involvement through the Mamvel Youth Advisory Committee reflects the powerful impact youth can have in shaping the future of our city." So, next, we have, she's not here, okay? So, we'll give that to her next week. We'll shame them at the next meeting, all right? So, next is Avery Bagwell. Okay, is Leah Martinez? And Ms. Leah here is also a part of our Mamvel Municipal Teens Court. So, she is very active. Leah Rangel? Not here either, okay. It's the last week of school, the people are busy this week. She's not here either, okay. Ms. Danielle? Charisma? Charisma? Nope, okay. Oops. Ms. Abigail? Ms. Alexis? I think we might be missing one, Tammy. I think we're just missing Brianna's. We will, come on up here, Brianna. So, Brianna, we'll make sure to have one for you at our meeting next week, okay? Well, as you can see, we have a lot of ladies that are involved, and we appreciate their involvement. We do have, we do have, oh, we found it. All, then we're stuck to the back, surprise! So, we do have two guys involved. We're looking to have more guys involved next year. But as they say, the women, they run the world.
You said it louder.
For the people in the back. But we still appreciate you guys and your involvement and excitement in shaping the future of our city. I know it means a lot to myself, it means a lot to council and staff, to see youth that actually care. You guys could be doing a thousand other things, but to take time every single month to come up here, to meet, to care about the city, it means a tremendous amount. Because one day, it's going to be you guys that are sitting in these seats. And to see you involved now is something truly special. So, I'm going to give it to you, we'll let you say a few words.
Yeah, so, I guess the reason why we started this council, I guess originally, you know, we're going off to, some of us are going off to college soon. It started off as like, oh, you need a, like, what's it called, a community service project? Or, you know, something that makes your resume stand out. And so, but soon, it came to be like a little bit more than that. And I learned the importance of how much the youth matters in a community and how much we are like, how much we matter to shaping the next generation and allowing people who have had experience, allowing them to help counsel us and help teach us how to become the next generation that leads our communities. And so, yeah, I really think that's important. And I wanted to give everybody, I wanted to help give everybody else that opportunity to kind of do that. So, me and Kate kind of worked on that together. And I just think Kate's, Kate was really brave to like, Kate actually came to me asking about it, if I would help her. And, yeah, I think that was really brave of her. And I think that's brave of everybody else to want to start something new and, you know, go through all the trials of, you know, making this new council. And I just thank you all.
So, if you guys know of any youth that are going to want to be involved for the next season, we would love to have them involved. We'll have some things that we'll do during the summer. I know that some of the group is going to be involved in the Fourth Fest that's coming up. And then, starting next school year, we'll have more applicants and more ways for people to be involved. So, if any of you live in Mamvel, if you know of any community service projects, ways that we can give back as a group, just let us, just let us know. Kate's also really good at soccer, if you want to try to beat her. I can neither confirm nor deny she's gotten a few yellow cards and red cards, but she's really good at soccer. So, if you guys want to squeeze over here, we'll kind of all shift over and then we'll take a photo together. Watch out, do not trip.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Congrats, ladies.
Give me one second here. Mayor Protown, this is where we need some of that waiting music, right?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Councilwoman, congratulations. Appreciate everyone being involved in both of those presentations. Next, we will have a staff presentation on the item of our public hearing. Joe, I think we're handing this one over to you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing.
Hey, Joe, one second. For Carmen's family, Councilwoman Carmen's family, if you guys want, you can, more than welcome to stay here, hang out with us all night, but you don't have to. You're more than welcome to leave at any time. Appreciate y'all being here. I know, the Councilwoman knows you guys. She's like, they'll probably hang out here all night unless we tell them. Appreciate you guys. All right, sorry, Joe, please proceed.
Sure. So, this is a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the subdivision ordinance. This proposed amendment primarily focused on changing the boundaries for the original Mamvel Townsite area, which currently is defined as your large avenue, cemetery, McCoy, and then, to the south, Bissell Street. And while we are making those amendments, staff has also included a few more amendments, which are primarily clarifications and changing some of the requirements based on previous knowledge and how we've adopted, enforced them, and how there's been some issues based on some of the language we had in the past. So, I would first like to focus on some of the secondary amendments. We are proposing to add language to clarify the allowance of master plans to serve as master preliminary plat as well. This is something that was done in the past, where if the master plan complies with the requirements of the preliminary plat, it can be treated as a preliminary plat instead of having another step. We've just included some clarification language for that. There are some languages included for requirements for final and minor plats, such as original tax certificate-related requirement, information related to maintenance of reserves and ownership of reserves. It just makes the plat review easier. And we've changed a typographic error regarding development plat, where a word "not" was missing, and that changed the entire meaning of that requirement. We've added a little more clarity to the minimum requirements of within ETJ. If y'all remember, this was a change that was adopted sometime back within old, open single-family residential zoning district, where if a lot exists as one acre and they're dedicating certain portion of their lot for right-of-way, it reduces by, say, .2, then for all practical purposes, that lot would be treated as conforming. So we've included that language for lots within the ETJ as well, because we've seen some situations where we would have to bring them for a subdivision variance approval. We've also included some clarifications on sidewalk and street construction-related requirement, specifically that have frontage along streets or right-of-way owned and managed by either county or state, where we've added language to make sure that if it is expressly required by the county or the state, that's when street construction requirement would kick in. Otherwise, what we ran into was a situation where the other entity does not allow for street construction, and our ordinance requires it, and we would end up going through a subdivision variance process. Another clarification is so that we could match the requirements of the Design Criteria Manual. The sidewalk width is being revised to a five-foot minimum width. So that covers most of the other clarification-related changes that we're making. Now, the primary change was the original Manville Townsite area. So right now, the area which is defined as the old Manville Townsite area has only non-residentially zoned properties. So it has all light commercial zoning district. What we are proposing is to expand the boundary to the north, to go all the way to Lewis Lane, and to the south, to go all the way to Jordan Road. And the packet has an exhibit that shows the revised boundary. And due to this change, there'll be properties that are zoned residential as well. And in order to be eligible for the allowances within original Manville Townsite area, currently the requirement was that the property has to be at least five acres. That is being increased to 10 acres, and then the original idea about this designation was to allow for the continuation of asphalt roads within this area, and staff is continuing that intent with this proposed amendment. However, regarding well and septic, in the past, since it was only commercial, there was specific language that allowed continuation of well and septic for non-residential as well, without having them to connect to existing lines. So something that staff is proposing, different from that approach, is to require non-residential uses to connect to existing city utility lines, both water and well. For residential development, existing, all existing well and septic can continue to be in use. Staff is also proposing that for any new residential use, if there is an existing water and utility line along the right-of-way that the property abuts, that the lot connect to those lines, instead of allowing for a new well and septic. This is in order to promote the city's utility services that is existing within the area. The city has water line and sewer line to a large extent within the original Manville Townsite area. This was, we had a public hearing at the Planning, Development, and Zoning Commission meeting as well. There was a lot of discussion from the commission about specifically the well and septic issue within this area. Originally, staff had proposed that no new well and septic be allowed within the original Manville Townsite area, but then the Planning, Development, and Zoning Commission found it to be beneficial to allow for well and septic within properties where there is no existing water and sewer line along the right-of-way. And they definitely wanted that language included for more clarity. Otherwise, the original proposal was, since this is a section that sits outside as an additional section, only restrictions and requirements be included in that section, and rest of it defaults to whatever provisions the entire subdivision ordinance has. So the language that you see within the proposed ordinance and the report is based off of input we received from the Planning, Development, and Zoning Commission. Staff is recommending approval, and the commission is also recommending approval of the proposed changes. If y'all have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Sounds good. When we get to that agenda item, we'll certainly have some questions and conversation there. We will now move to the public hearing. I will read out the subject of the public hearing, and then we will open it up to anybody that wishes to speak on the subject of the public hearing. So this public hearing states to hear input from the public regarding amending the code of ordinances of the city of Manville, Texas by amending Chapter 62 subdivisions, Article IV, minimum requirements for subdivisions and/or re-subdivision, amending several provisions pertaining to additional requirements for subdivisions in the original Manville Townsite OMT, including OMT boundary, street and sidewalk construction, lot size, lot setback, and exceptions for certain Manville residents, amending Chapter 62 subdivisions, Article II subdivisions, and development process to amend provisions and requirements related to development plats, and further amending Chapter 62 subdivisions for possible correction of an existing typographical errors. So I would like to open it up to first call, for anybody that is wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing, please come forward. Second call, and third call. So we will close this public hearing at 6:34 PM. Joes, thank you for that overview. Next, we will move to public comments. We have one comment card that has been submitted, and this comment card is for Mr. Adrian Gaspar. So Adrian, you know the deal, come forward, state your name, address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Everyone buckle your seatbelts.
Say things the way I see it. My wife made me promise that I will not call anybody a Democrat, Liberal, or Communist, so I will not do that. And actually, I didn't come here to complain. I came here to tell you that I went and I got a permit today for some dirt to fill up some of the holes on my property, and I was so salty, because I don't like to deal with all these restrictions. But this lady, by the name of Isabella Lamb, she put a smile on my face. She was actually so nice that I couldn't be rude to her even if I wanted to. So, congratulations to you all, because I guess you guys have a hand on hiring these people, and please keep the restrictions down. Allow us who live on acreage, live and let live. That is my motto. I did have a question about the policy, but I got ahold of the director, and he explained it to me, and he put me at ease. So that text I sent you earlier, Mayor Dan, were good. So anyway, keep up the good work, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gaspar. We'll make sure to let your wife know that you behaved yourself tonight. Dan, Joes, you can tell Ms. Isabella that she can put on her resume endorsed by Adrian Gaspar. Alright, Tammy, no more public comments? Alright, we'll now move on to the City Manager update portion of the meeting. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. And I would take that one step further, there's no need for a resume for Isabel, because we want her to stay, so she doesn't need to update any resume. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So a couple of things to bring to your attention tonight. So I wanted to, I guess while we're in the mood to applaud our staff, Rosie just completed the TMO Leadership Academy, so we're very proud of her for completing that. Yes? No more traveling to those long meetings, but they were good, right? They were good meetings. So, let's see, we had our CNR 3, so that's the Drainage District from Alvin, the Conservation and Reclamation Drainage District number three. We had our quarterly meeting with them last week, and that was a good meeting. We had our monthly meeting with Tech Dot this morning, also a good meeting. I'll be sending y'all a summary of what we talked about. I think, Mayor, you've already posted some stuff about that, so that was a good meeting today. Also, some more good news, our TDM, the generator grant application has been submitted and received. So those, just to refresh your memory, there were two generators that we're trying to get for our critical facilities, and it looks like, so far, so good, that those are moving forward. And as far as your calendar goes, so this week, on Wednesday, BCCA is gonna be meeting in Angleton. Tammy sent y'all an email earlier today, so if you are planning to go, we need to get that probably in tonight, most likely? Okay. Let's see, Thursday night, Parks Board meeting here at 6:00 PM. If you haven't been in one of those, they're discussing some good things. I think this Thursday, Joes, are we talking about Almost Heaven? I think, yep. So the park is just adjacent to Sedona Lakes. Obviously, Monday coming up is Memorial Day, so that'll be a holiday, so PD and Z will be on Tuesday instead of Monday. That's all, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Dan. Rosie, congratulations. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. Any comments or questions about the consent agenda? Dan, are we tracking this financial data yet for the consent agenda for these infrastructure projects?
We have a kickoff meeting. We're, this is gonna be a big project, but I'm pretty excited about it. I don't know what the budget implications are gonna look like, but yeah, we're gonna make a comprehensive list of all of the projects and all their infrastructure. Yes, sir.
Very exciting. Councilman Lance, appreciate you bringing that up at the last meeting. For the consent agenda, Council, do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
We have a motion to approve from our Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, well, I think Councilman Hudson beat everyone, so we'll give the second to Councilman Hudson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-2-0. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to agenda item number one, and then Council, after we do agenda item number one, I'd like to move up agenda item number four after that, because we do have a representative here from your Neighborhood Farmers Market. So Council, agenda item number one is consideration and possible action to direct staff on a memorandum of understanding between the city of Manville, Brazoria County, MUD 83, and Hillwood Enterprises LP. So Council, we had a good discussion in executive session. Russ, Shima, appreciate you guys being here and all the work staff that you've been doing, and Russ, you and the team have been doing on this MOU. Coming from the executive session, we took no action, but we do want to take an action now to direct staff that we are in support of the MOU that you guys are gonna bring back to Russ and Shima and the team, and if everything goes well, bring that back to our next council meeting for approval. So Council, I would like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second from the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-2-0. And our goal is to get this across the finish line at our next meeting, so thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Hope it goes well these next two weeks. Next, Council, are you guys good if we move forward, agenda item number four? Everyone in support of that? Okay. Agenda item number four is consideration and possible action to direct staff on the Manville Fall Festival and authorize the city manager to execute the hotel-motel tax-grant agreement and agreement for services between the city of Manville and your Neighborhood Farmers Market Association. Dan, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And like you said, we do have a representative from your Neighborhood Farmers Market here tonight. So this is a continuation, hopefully, possibly even the conclusion of our discussion at the last meeting. Council had asked to bring this back to y'all so that you could see the agreement. I believe Tammy put a printed version of the actual agreement at the dais for each one of you. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, the page, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I guess it would be, has the breakdown that we had discussed, you know, how do we arrive at the budget of a total of $150,000. And so this has a breakdown of the different components, so that we can all see them together. I know Craig couldn't be here tonight, but I don't know if her better half wants to come up and just kind of talk to us a little bit about it from your Neighborhood Farmers Market? No, you're good.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Davis, Dan Johnson, just glad you had me to come in. I'm glad to be here. So any questions that you have for me pertaining to this, we sent out the information, I hope you've had time to review it. Any questions you may have concerning what we have put before you, just let me know, and I'll be willing to move forward.
Well, thank you so much. I do think we're gonna have some questions. It's good to see you again. How have you been doing?
Pretty good.
Good, good.
Busy.
So Dan, I know that at the last meeting, there were kind of a few areas that we asked you guys to explore. One was gonna be the time, about moving the time from 2 until 8, or a hybrid, or keep it as 11 to 5. It shows that the time is still 11 to 5. Can you speak to those conversations?
Yes, sir. So that was definitely a discussion at the last meeting, so we had three strong council members that were interested in keeping it at 11 to 5, three strong, possibly moving it to 2 to 8, more of an evening music fest, and then the seventh one was kind of either way. As it just happens, we have a new councilman, Councilwoman, actually, tonight for her first meeting, so this is something that obviously y'all need to know, we all need to say out loud, which way we want to go. You know, it's a completely different, or has a potential to be a completely different event. If it's 11 in the morning until 5:00 PM, that's sort of the extension of a farmer's market kind of feel with the face painting and the pumpkin patch and all those kind of things, as opposed to if it's a 2 to 8, where it's a music fest, and now we're talking, we need some lights, obviously, out of the parking lot and stuff like that. So, obviously, y'all have done plenty of these different types of events. Can you talk to Council, I guess, on sort of the pros and cons of going, of those two different routes?
Right, yeah, I can definitely do that. Just know that we're able to provide anything that you want ultimately. The property that you, or the park that we have at that location, it's not really conducive to a night market, only because it doesn't have lighting. So it doesn't have any lighting there for us to actually, to illuminate, or at a certain time, at 6:30, because at 6:36 on October 18th, it will be dark. Okay? It will be dark. So, we found this information out, so we wanted to provide that to you. Now, as far as illuminating, we can light it up like a Christmas tree. I mean, we can light it up like it's 3 o'clock in the evening all over, okay? And we can do that, but now we have to worry about lighting up that whole area that's gonna be where the market will take place, and around the areas around it, parking, and we gotta do the parking, the lighting for the parking, if we're gonna do the parking lot that's adjacent to the park. So we have to light that up for safety reasons. We have to work back with safety first to do that. So in order for us to do that, if you want it, we can do it. Lighting just is one of the things, we put this together, we thought it was more of a family-friendly, which doesn't stop us from doing it from 2 to 8, or giving different type of avenues that you would want. It's just that, it would be, it would change the criteria of what we put together, what we thought initially coming in at a $150,000 budget. That's what we based this on. If we decide to go with the lighting, decide to go with the option from 2 to 8, then it changes the price. And we know this because of our expertise, our cursor work that we've already done, our cursor research, and our research and development that we've already done. We've done the Uptown District for three years with the lighting with them. We did the Uptown District, we did the Energy Corridor, the lighting with them, the Christmas tree lighting with them. We've also did the Memorial. So we've done all of these events, and we know what that number looks like. So that number goes to around 225,000 versus the 150,000 that we were able to fit into this from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
So, to that point specifically, if we wanted to stay at our $150,000 budget, we would either have to cut $75,000 worth of items if we wanted to move it till 2 to 8, or increase the budget from 150 to 225.
Yeah, around that, yeah, absolutely.
Or increase sales to offset that.
Or increase sales to offset that.
Garden and partnerships.
So another question, Dan, that had come up, and I think you spoke to it, was lighting, so we did cover that, because we wanted some clarity about lighting. The next one was the beer and wine garden. So it looks like that there would be a cost to the city of 8,500. From your experience, because the city would not want to take on the liability of providing alcohol to people that would consume alcohol at this event, and then the implications of that from a safety standpoint. But by allowing alcohol or beer and wine to be sold, I'm assuming that there's a profit that would be coming to you guys from that, is that correct?
Not necessarily. Only because we would actually get someone to come out with TABC license with that, that they would have those licenses, and they would provide. It could be a local bar, or that would come out and provide, or it could be a brewery, a winery that we currently have. They would come out as a vendor, and they would receive the profits from that sale. That doesn't come to your Neighborhood Farmers Market.
to be sold, I'm assuming that there's a profit that would be coming to you guys from that. Is that correct?
Not necessarily, only because we would actually get someone to come out with TABC license with that, that they're being, they, they would have those licensing, and they would provide. It could be a, a local bar or that would come out and provide, or it could be a brewery, a winery that we currently have. They would come out as a vendor, and they would receive the, the profits from that sale. That doesn't come to your neighborhood farmer's market. Our, we, we're the managers of the farmer's market. We're the, the, the managers, basically.
Okay. Council, we'll kind of go down, go pass it around here to see what other questions you might have for, for, for staff and the gentleman that's here tonight. Councilman Lance, it looks like you are unmuted. Are there any sort of clarifications that you're looking for?
Well, my, the main thing was the hours. Obviously, I think I can speak for myself and this one other council member that we definitely wanted a 7:00 PM timeframe. The idea in the very beginning was a music fest. I appreciate the idea that we're, this is going to be family oriented, and we're going to have pumpkin patch and all that. That's great. But I don't want us to lose focus of the music fest, the evening entertainment for the adults. And I think, like we said earlier, it's just a totally different venue from one shutting down at 5:00 PM. So that's a, to me, that's a, that's a nonstarter. I mean, if, if we don't do a 7:00 PM one, just interest is pretty much goes downhill. And this $75,000 for lighting, that's, right?
Yeah. It's not, it's not just for, it's not just for, for lighting. There's other things that are added in there. There would be extra security that now that has to go into that, that cost. Now, we not only have, now we have an evening staff, we have more staff that we have to produce now. So it's a lot of other intangibles that goes in with just the lighting, that, that we would have to provide in order to make sure that people are safe and sound. Their safety, we have to work safety backwards in order to make sure that this event is going to go, we have to have someone in that parking lot the whole time, monitoring that parking lot, because it's going to get later, it's going to get dark. We have to facilitate everybody to get out, because if it ends at 8 o'clock, it's dark at 6:30. So at 8 o'clock, you may have 2,000 people or 1,500 people still there. We, the shuttle services now, we, we want it to be a little quicker. We're going to provide more of, of the services as far as shuttling back and forth, buses, things like that. Those things are going to have to go up in order to ensure that we can get everybody out of there safe and sound in the right order and facilitate.
I kind of don't understand that. Neither do we didn't increase the hours, we just changed the hours. So why is there more people? I'm kind of like David, I'm not following that cost there. So you're saying we don't need security in the parking lot during the daytime?
What I'm saying is, once it gets darker...
Yes or no?
Uh, no, no. We need more, we need more at night. You, you have to facilitate more at night. You have to be more safe. We, we have to work safety first, safe back.
How many, how many people are we talking about?
Based on what we currently have, I don't know exactly how many people we have, but we know that it's definitely going to increase. There's no way to keep it at the number.
We kind of need to know how many. If we know a number, we should have known how that number got, got to.
Well, when we put this together, based on what we, what you initially asked for, this is what we put together, right? If now that you want something different, then that's a whole different conversation. But we know from our market research, from doing day markets and night markets, or night festivals and day festivals, that the cost increased for night festivals.
Could we see that market research?
Excuse me?
Could we see that market research?
We could put something together to do that for you, to show what it would be. That's not a problem. But we also would ask you to, at this point, and at this point, that you would, that you would do some type of letter of engagement, or we would give you type of letter engagement. Because our time, our energy, the things that we're putting forward, we, we, we're to the point now where we have to move forward, whether we're going to do it or not at this point.
Okay.
This $8,500 for the beer and wine, that's just to pick a vendor that's going to decide the price and the profit margin and everything?
Yes. For what you're looking for, if you were looking at winery, certain vineyards, they're going to cost us to bring them out. Then we have to have the setup. There's a whole huge tent setup. There's, there's lighting for that as well on the inside. To give you what you're asking for, for the beer garden and things like that, there are costs involved in putting that together. It's not just the drinking aspect or the beer and wine aspect, aspect of it.
Does the 8,500 cover the, the insurance covers that they would probably have to buy?
We, that, they would have their insurance, whatever they come in with, whatever we pay them, they would have to cover that cost. But it does increase our insurance level. We have to have specific insurance for that, that, that event, absolutely. So our cost would go up, definitely. And it switches from day to night as well. It's a difference in price. Because families, it's, it's a known fact, and it's through research, that people drink more at night, as tonight. They feel more freely, they drink more. And you'll see that if you do the night market, if we do the night market versus the day market, that a lot of families will leave about 5. They're going to go, because they know that it turns.
The original idea wasn't a family event anyway, per se, not like it's presented here.
Well, what we were given, the information, what you wanted, based on our, at the beginning, that's what we put in here. We asked for a few things, and this is the information that we were given. So that's why we kind of put this together for you.
All right. Let's go, let's go mayor pro tem, and then we'll go councilwoman, Robby Robinson.
Mayor, would it be okay if I just connected the dots, sir?
Yep.
Because I feel like they're in the crosshairs for that. So the scope, pardon me, the scope that they put together was what we provided to them as a result of all those different meetings that we had. So they, they just put the proposal together, and, and we did not have until like the second to the last meeting, I think, is whenever the night idea first made it to any of our, of our agenda notes. That's not, that's not what we originally had. You know, originally, we talked about it was an expansion of the farmer's market. So I just wanted to let them off the hook. That, that's, that's what we provided to them.
Thanks for that clarification, because that's kind of where I was going was, first of all, thank you. Appreciate that. And usually, whenever we're making big decisions like this, we like to lean on the experts, because they've done it, and they know what it takes. So I consider you an expert. And so thank you for that. And thanks for the clarification, city manager Dan, because it does sound like our first impression was we want something different. So just so, just to bring you up to speed from what I think council's impression of what we were trying to come together with, is I think we've had multiple ideas, a festival, whether that's a day festival, but really, we were leaning towards a, a music festival, something that is different than all the community events that go around during that timeframe, which are fall festivals, pumpkin patches, and that. There's, there's a plentitude of those. So from our understanding, I wish you maybe had seen the meeting from last week, because I think, like he said, there was some strong sentiments towards what does it look like to compare the two, so that we're able to see what a music festival looks like versus that. When I'm looking at your proposal here, I just have a few questions that maybe we could clarify on. And I will get to the beer and wine garden here shortly, but it's, it's understandable that we're going to need labor, right? That's the first thing you need whenever you're going to put on an event like this, is to have a strong labor force, vet them, hire them, et cetera. When we're looking at $10,500 here for labor, which is external, I imagine contractors to do that, how many employees do we think, or how many people would it take to put on an event like this, in your experience?
The, I would say, the date prior to the market, the setup?
Mm-hmm, the setup.
The first 90 days, the first 90 days, we're probably going to be looking at about 10 employees.
10 employees.
That's, that's, that's the first, well, probably the first 60 days.
60 days.
Then we'll ramp it up a little bit more, probably to about 15. And then probably the week of, you're probably looking at another 10. So you're probably looking at about 10, 10 to 20 employees on average.
10 to 20.
That, that'll be working, pretty much, the 10 employees, or the eight to 10 employees, initial first 60 days, will probably be working 30 to 40 hours a week.
So we're, so we're allocating an estimate of 10 employees working full-time on this project for 60 days or 30 days?
I would say about 60, 45 to 60 days. We would have several employees working, yes.
And are these employees also simultaneously working on other projects that you have on top of those 40 hours?
We would probably dedicate employees strictly for this. We have to, because of the time crunch.
Of course.
That's what we have to do.
Okay. So thank you for that. So I'm seeing that that would be $10,500. And, and obviously, I understand you have to make money. This is a business, right? We're not asking you to do it for free. But the numbers just have to make sense in order for us to, to vote, to spend our taxpayer money to have the event that we want. So that's the only reason why we're pulling down these numbers and dissecting them. And I know it can be frustrating on your behalf, because we've been here before with the farmer's market. So I totally empathize with, excuse me, with that. And then I, I'm seeing here, safety and security. Did this price change from the original one? Because it's showing $3,500. Did this number go up? Or is this based on?
When you say original one, what exactly?
So, so, okay, so you're right. So this right here says from 10 to 11, I'm sorry, 11 to 5. So this is the original daytime event. So if we're considering the difference in safety and security for, and, and just so that we're transparent, and everybody out there knows what's on here, security, EMS, code, fire, and fire coordination, I imagine that we'll probably have Manville PD on site, right? Working this? So would that be something we pay them, or do we cover that ourselves?
We haven't talked about the specifics of, of all of the details. I mean, obviously, Manville Police is going to be involved in.
Obviously.
ESD is going to have to be involved. So we'll have to sit down and visit with them. So I think it's more the coordination, and then what Chief and I have been trying to figure out what makes the most sense. Is this a, you know, is this an overtime situation? Or is this a, a separate job, an extra job, I guess, as they call them? And that's probably where we're leaning, you know, it's just like with, with the different events, with the Church on Masters Road when they had an event. And, you know, if, if any of the big events, it, it ends up taking up our personnel for sure, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, with the security, we, we have to provide some type of security as well.
Of course.
You have officers, we do know that, but your officers are also working and patrolling the city. I think you have like 24 officers or something like that?
Yeah.
Right now. So we had to take into account of how many officers you have, how many's going to be on duty, how many's going to be working. So we need, when we have beer and wine, we have to have people there to help facilitate.
100%.
Right?
So I imagine we'll have commissioned security officers?
Absolutely. We would have people that had, that, that are licensed.
Perfect.
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay. And then for the budget of 3,500, how much would we pay security officers versus police officers? My understanding, overtime can range between 30 and 50 dollars an hour? Yay? Nay? It's okay. I'm just looking for confirmation. So just as a rough estimate...
That, that's more of proprietary information.
Okay.
For us, yes.
Well, we're budgeting $3,500. So just, to me, looks like maybe a lot of employee, a lot of security.
If you have five or six officers, or people running around for, you, you're looking at probably, the market starts, you say it starts at, at 2 o'clock, right?
Yeah.
So now, we're going to get there, they have to be there prior to you guys coming. So you're probably working until, until everyone leaves. So we're talking a 12-hour day, at least.
Totally. So do you have like a formula that you guys use? Whenever you have, like, for every thousand attendees, how many officers and security do we have on staff to, to man the event?
Based on what we've done in the past, and once we get a true guesstimation of what's going to be there?
Okay.
Then we would have a better number of what, what would be there. But we know, based on what we're thinking now, today, that we, we're going to, that budget fits well. It's definitely not overstated.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. And then the other question that I have is the festival development here. It's the first line item on your proposal. We've got it at $9,600. And I imagine that's your staff's time and your business's time to develop this and put it into play. But also, on top of that, we're paying for labor and staffing. So really, that number goes to 20, almost third, 27, 20, 10 plus 10, $20,000.
Right. So when you encompass, when I say employees, I also meant contractors, right?
Okay.
So we got contractors, we got staff, we got external, we got internal staff. We also have, when we're doing this planning, we're reaching out to different people that, when you're dealing with the planning and the marketing side of this business, it's very expensive.
Yeah.
So that cost, that cost is raised really quick.
Okay. And then also, on and off-site management, what's the difference between on and off-site management and festival development and site plan, research, and development? One of those is 9,000, the other is 8,000. And then oversight, accounting, budget management is an additional $1,500.
Okay. So the, the on and off-site, so what we basically going to have to do is once we, once we decide, or once you say, okay, we sign a deal, we sign a contract, then we're going to have to start coming out to this site.
Okay.
We're going to have to start coming and say, hey, this is where this is going to go. This is how, we're going to have to meet contractors out here if we're doing a 2 to 8 for lighting to make sure everything is in place. It's going to be a lot of going back and forth. And then constantly back in the, back at, in the office, it's going to be constant what's going on as well, for that, as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. So then the event production, on top of the festival development, the site plan, research, and development, the on and off-site management, event production's another 8,600 on top of that. So these are all different things?
Yes, absolutely. Then for the, event production, it also goes to the day of production, everything that's going to happen.
Yeah, everybody that runs this, run, the run of show, run of event, all of that.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So that. And then I'm, then on top of that, we have entertainment, staffing, and stage setup for entertainment and music. Were we planning on having entertainment or music activities for the day event versus the evening event?
The plan for the entertainment was always going to be singers. It's going to be bands of, of, of four to six, four to six people.
Different bands.
Bands, and a couple of different bands, maybe two to three different bands, depending on what you guys want, whatever you want, that's what we would provide.
Okay. I think we said Zydeco, or at least one, right? Okay. And Kid Zone, 10,000, vendor selection, infrastructure, 13, signage and advertising. So for me, if, if we're hiring you guys, which we, we obviously like your package and the presentation, the fact that you guys have this, but it's my understanding that that goes into the development of the, of the event, right? The festival development. But it says here, you guys are going to market it as well.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the reason that we have to market this event is because we do have 60, 70, 80 vendors that'll be there.
Okay.
It's our job to make sure that the people get there. Now, I understand that you're going to market, but we have to make sure.
Yeah, we, we want that.
We owe that to our vendors.
100%. We totally want you to market it, right?
Yeah.
Because we need people here for it to be successful. So on that note, since you brought up vendors, what is your strategy or your plan for bringing in bigger sponsorships? Or is that something that we would collaborate with on the city side to bring people to sponsor the event?
That's something on your end that you would bring sponsors in, on your end, that you could do. If we see, because looking at this budget, I'll be totally honest with you, it became really tight really quick. But we were told that the budget was 150,000. So we curtailed it to stay within that budget. If for some reason, we see that we're getting tight on this budget, then we're not going to come back and ask you, we need another 20,000, another 10,000. We're going to have to take other measures.
Yeah.
Sponsorships. Or we're going to have to go in our pockets and do it, because this is what we said we would provide.
Okay. All right. Secondly, just my last question here, when it comes to the beer and wine garden, that's the, the topic of the, I believe, the topic of the night, we are budgeting $8,500 to have that. But can you just clarify for me how that's going to work if we are paying 8,000, but we're also going to source a vendor to come that has TABC, or maybe a local restaurant that's going to provide that, and they're going to profit off of that? I'm just kind of, I don't understand how, why we would pay for that, and then they get to come and profit.
Because certain vendors?
Okay.
They, they, when they come, in order to get what you want, sometimes we have to pay vendors to want to be a part of our program.
So, so we're going to pay them to come?
Yeah. We, well, we don't necessarily have to pay them, but the setup?
Okay.
Everything else around.
Got it.
It also costs.
Okay.
But if for some reason, the vendor might say, hey, we can come out, because they want to guarantee their sales, right?
Of course.
In a certain way. We can tell them it's going to be 10,000 people, but if only 200 show up, then they've lost. So some of them want money upfront to say, hey, I need $1,000 to ensure that they be here, because you want me to have that.
Because it's a service?
The license here, the service here. I have to be able to provide that service.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that makes sense. So 8,000 would be, would bring, who would you?
We would, breweries, we have wineries that we would bring in. We would, breweries, we have wineries that we would bring in. And if there's something that you wanted, someone that provide daiquiris or something like that, that's the information that you give me and we'll make sure we get those people there.
Okay. So the only, I mean, thank you so much for clarifying all of this. I know it's tough on you. I know.
Okay.
But we have to, because we have to make a big decision.
Yes.
Right? This is, we want this to be good and we want the numbers to make sense. We have to. That's our job. Otherwise, we get emails and we get text messages and people who are watching. So we have to have the answers for our constituents, right?
I understand.
I would like to see what your, what these numbers look like worked up. Hopefully, we can give some direction. But I really think that council is going to, is going to want a musical festival, whether it's in the day or in the nighttime. I think that we feel strongly on that.
So when you say musical, what exactly?
Music festival.
Music festival?
Yeah.
What are you looking for? Because that was built into that 11 to 5, quite honestly.
Okay.
I mean, in six hours, if you put in on about three acts.
Yeah.
Then that's pretty much all you're going to really get.
I guess, I guess you make a strong point there.
That's really what it is.
What was your name again?
Johance.
Thank you, Johance. Appreciate you.
No problem.
I'm done. Thank you.
Mayor Perotan, I'll give a little bit of the history here and then Councilwoman will go to you. So where it started that, we had two, two council members and a city employee that had the idea of, let's do a music festival where there will be music that's happening, whether we, you know, maybe we just throw up a stage at the 160 acres, that land, or do something for, something for music. And so those three individuals started to, started to meet, they met with the Alvin Sunrise Rotary Club to see what they do for their, their weekend festival. And they have the cook-off and they have a kids' zone and they have activities. But, you know, those three, the city employee and the two council members, they're busy. They work, they've got a lot that's going on. So then we started meeting as a, as a bigger group. And the idea where it kind of turned slightly and it said, well, let's do a music festival and some other activities combined, was how do we bring all of Manville together? Not just for necessarily a music festival, but the thought was, well, what about Colleen? You know, we, we do not have the in-house resource capacity to be able to do this ourselves. You can ask Tammy, Tammy's like, no, we are maxed out at events. Well, Colleen does the farmer's market. What if we reached out to Colleen? What would just her pure cost be? Then it could be an extension of the Manville market that's happening. But then the idea came, well, what about these guys? These guys have done something exactly what we're looking for. What would our budget be? What could we fit within that budget? So that way we can, in a sense, partner, but also give you guys a lot of that burden to carry for us, to take the vision that the three at the beginning had. It's evolved over time and make that, ultimately make that happen. A music festival where there's music and dancing and people can sit there, can enjoy with their family, with their drinks, have a good time, but also other things that will draw the people together. And what it looks like for us is we just have a choice to make. We can say, you know what? This isn't what we're looking for. We'll figure it out in-house. But how I foresee that happening is this will never come to fruition. If we want it to be truly just a music festival, purely a music festival, do it till 2 to 8, they can probably do that within this budget, but you're cutting out pretty much every other activity. It's just purely going to be music. The question is, do we want to have it be something that's more people can be involved in or just a music festival for the budget? So that's kind of how it's been. It did start off purely as just music. And that's kind of how it's been, it's evolved over time. But I mean, this has been discussed for almost nine months now. And so we have to make a decision tonight, one way or the other, which way we're going to go. And also knowing that it's going to continue to evolve in the future as the city grows, as our budget grows, there's going to be more opportunities to, to do things there.
So are we, tonight, are we agreeing to the budget? Or are we agreeing to give them direction to go ahead and work with?
To, this would be direction to, possible action to direct staff on the festival and giving the city manager the authority to execute a grant agreement and an agreement for services if it meets what we would be looking for there.
Okay.
Councilwoman, thank you for your patience, please.
All good. I just wanted to know if there was any wiggle room with the timeframe? Did it have to be 11 to 5 or 2 to 8?
It depends on what you want. It's just, 11 to 5 is what it was based on. If you want 2 to 8, we can do 2 to 8. But it changes the conversation. It becomes a, an issue of finances.
Because, so in October in Texas, usually like the sunset would be around 6:30 or 7 o'clock. So would it change the cost and the amount of lighting that would be needed if we were to adjust the time from 1 to 7 instead of 2 to 8? And still a little bit later than 11 to 5? And then that way you can pull in, you know, whoever was going to be coming? You could still have for families, but then?
With the lighting is the only, only issue, is a really big issue. And it's a safety issue. It's the number one issue. It's not the only issue. But that 5 o'clock versus 7 o'clock is a big difference because you've got to now get everyone that's there out. Not only do you have to get them out, you have to get them out safe. And you want to get them out a little faster and, because there's going to be a lot of moving parts when it gets darker. It's just a lot of moving parts. And things happen when it, when the night comes.
Okay.
Because you probably, I'm assuming, Johance, that you have people that linger afterwards.
Absolutely.
You got to, they're going to linger and linger until we get our Manville police officers to say, you got to get up and go and then they got to make their way back. And that's the lag time.
If it, if it ends at 8 and everybody enjoyed themselves and had a good time, people are going to, we're not going to clear the park till about 9:30 or 10 to everybody gets out. And then I'm talking about the people that linger are going to linger an hour, an hour and 30 minutes. They're going to hang around, they're going to finish their beer, they're going to finish their wine. They're going to still be hanging around the beer garden. It's just, just the way it is.
And then tear down. Would tear?
Yes, and then we have to do the tear down. We have to do the whole tear down that even all our vendors would have to leave. Like what's the, like I was saying with security, security has to be there 24/7. Because all the equipment, all the things, we have to ensure that those things are in place. I can't expect the Manville Police to set up posts to watch all the equipment and the things that's going to be there. We have to man those things ourselves. So we have to be there when different companies are coming back and forth to get things out because they're breaking down, they're leaving. So it's just a whole big aspect of everything when it's so dark out.
So on to that point, I imagine as council member Carmen said, around 5:30, 6 o'clock, it starts to get dark. By the time it's 7, it's going to be very dark. It's going to be pitch dark. So it's going to be very dark. So he makes a strong point. If we want this, we have to allocate for lighting and then the tear down process. Any, anytime there's an event, you've got to tear down, take down. So if it ends at 8, people won't start clearing until 8 or 9, vendors start shutting everything down, then they start loading, unloading.
Correct.
And exiting the premises. So that could easily turn into a, to a 9 to 10 p.m. ordeal.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that just, that clarifies a lot for me. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you, Mayor Perotan. Councilman Hudson?
I think last time I mentioned that anything after dark, you have some problems with alcohol, liquor. This is in September. Was it October? We're going to have some issues, especially our first one. I understand all the things that we would like to do, make it a family affair. But after 5, 6 o'clock, we're going to have some issues. I was just at a concert for Mother's Day. And it started at 5 and ended at 7. Lot of, it wasn't a lot of vendors or anything, but it was alcohol. Everybody brought their alcohol. You're going to have some problems if you don't, of heed to, you know. I think Manville Police, they are, they are going to have some problems. When it gets dark, you're going to have problems with alcohol. So I'd like to see the gentleman move forward and all this little nitpicking in terms of monies, where it's going and all that, that's difficult. Because you're going to need, once you get into it, you're going to have some more unseen costs. And if he says he's going to do it for the 150, we'll hold that to him and move forward. So, you know, for the city of Manville, for the first one, I would say this is the right time. Now, to say that what we want, we can't, you have to put this together earlier to stay at night, family affairs and everything. And it'll take two or three hours to get out of there. And then that's the security. And Manville Police won't be able to handle all that and deal with all the subdivisions and everything. So that's my position, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions from council?
I just think we're mixing apples and oranges if you try to mix family fun and alcohol together. You know, I see a hard press to have, to have families out there with a lot of booze. You know, you're, it's two different groups of people. I've done a lot of event security. You start drawing, you have a music festival at night, it's a different crowd. And if you're going to do that, take out the 40,000 for the kids' zone. Make it a straight-up music festival, right? If we're talking family, right? Wine and beer, you know, and keep it in the daytime. It's the baby steps. We're at baby steps here. You know, it's like, it's, because you're mixing two, you know, two different things. You know, if you go to Froberg Farms on Saturday, they have, you know, the family fun, they have a little entertainment. That's okay. That's fun. Right? I don't know what kind of music we're talking about, wasn't part of that meeting. But to me, it's just like, wow. Those are two different things, especially when you start kicking into the evening, right? I think you're, I hear what he's saying. That's a different crowd, it's a different problem. Right? And it's just, so I'm leaning, you know, that's, I'm good with the money, right? But I would rather see it in the daylight hours, just for more to see where we're at, what it, what it looks like, how successful is it? Because then you have data, right? Then we can know what next year would look like.
I agree.
Right?
I agree. I think for our very first one, we talked about this, the very first one's going to be a learning experience for us. So after listening to all the pros and cons, I think this is a good place to start, keeping at the 150,000, which is what we budgeted. We'll learn a lot. We'll see where we can change things. You know, we'll get together afterwards and get you involved in that and say, you know, this is, this is what we saw, this is what really happened. Now, how do we move to the next?
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
I was just going to say that one way to get the data is, I know that we're mixing apples and oranges, but you really don't know until Manville has its first festival in general. And so the only way you're going to get data is if you do both essentially. Because if you only do a music festival, you're only going to see your return on a music festival. So there is nothing to compare. So you really have to do both. And as someone who has a younger child, you know, like, I wouldn't mind a glass of wine. It's not like it's, well, I guess anyone can abuse alcohol. But it's beer and wine, the alcohol content is a lot lower than what a hard liquor like a vodka or something would be, you know? And perhaps we could put limitations out there. If there's like a tab things, I don't know, two-drink limit or a ticket thing. I mean, there's ways to combat that. But the only way you're actually going to have data is if you actually implement it.
So no, no Jell-O shots? No Fireballs? Okay?
No alcohol, it's beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
We're good with that. And by doing it at night, people will be able to bring things in that they probably weren't supposed to either.
Sneaking some of that contraband.
There you go.
All right. I would ask one thing. When we get to the nitty-gritty details and you're talking about this beer and wine person that you bring in, I think we need to figure out how to keep the cost to the public as low as possible.
We can, we, we can, we can suggest, we will vet, if you give me a number, what you guys are looking for, then we can.
I mean, you're going to, you're going to be the one that's looking at these people, the contracts you do. I'm just asking that we try and keep it as low as possible. Same thing on the food. I mean, we want, we want good quality stuff and I know you're going to provide that.
Right.
But we also want to think about the cost because we're asking people, we're not charging to come to the festival. But for somebody to sit out there and pay $10 for a glass of wine or $8 for a beer, they're going to think they're now at Reliant Stadium and it's rodeo town. So let's just think about that.
Absolutely. We, when we're, when we're vetting our vendors that are coming out, we do have the ones that's currently that we do deal with from time to time. But when we do vet them, we do ask, they have to list what their basic pricing is. So what, what do they charge? And if it's outrageous, we'll let them know, this is what we're used to, this is our expectations.
All right. Thank you, Johance. Councilman Hudson?
I finished. Go ahead.
Mayor Perotan?
Okay. I have, I do have a couple, just things that are on, in my gut right now. And I want to make sure that I have those answered. The first question is, I want, or request, I would like to make sure that we offer local Manville residents some type of incentive or something and in conjunction with Colleen with the, the farmer's market. I want to make sure that we partner on that. Are you, are you good doing that?
Yeah. When you mean partner, what exactly?
I want to make sure that we include her and the vendors that have already been part of our Manville market. There's a lot of them that have been, that have been putting in the time, the sweat and the tears and coming as this is something new for us. So I don't want, if we work with you, that we exclude her and those vendors and that it becomes competitive in that sense. Because we are hiring you to put on the festival.
Correct. Absolutely. So what we've already, I think we've already talked about that with Dan, that we don't have a problem with Colleen bringing her group.
Perfect.
And we'll have them set up as well.
Awesome.
We'll, we'll let her control that. This is your area, your space, and we'll let her control that.
Okay. And then in addition to that, how many vendors in your research and development on this project are you foreseeing that you guys will bring to this event? And then what would be a cost? Because I know you're going to charge them and then they're going to sell and then we're paying you guys. So that is definitely a question.
We were looking at, based on our market research right now, 60, I know it's got broad numbers, 60 to 100 vendors.
Okay.
That we would bring in for that event. Now, with those 60, 100 vendors, we would partner, we want to partner with Dan and see exactly what vendors that you're actually looking for.
Perfect.
Do you want someone with cider? Or do you want someone that does some type of pumpkin, some type of pumpkin medley that you want out? You tell us and then we'll go out there and solicit those vendors.
Okay.
And a lot of times, those vendors will come once again, but there is a price to get him, to get those people there.
Okay. So just, just from my understanding, I'm hearing we're going to pay vendors to come when it comes to the beer and, beer and wine garden. But what about the other type of vendors? What other vendors are we trying to bring to the event?
We have, we have our vendors, that we have a pool of vendors that we, that come out to our festivals and our markets. So they would be selling breads, they would sell breads, they would sell jewelry. It's a whole array of things. They would sell fruits.
But they would pay to come to the event, right? They would pay to?
So, yes, ma'am, you're correct.
Okay. But we wouldn't pay them?
So what's your question?
That was my question, was we're going to pay for, you guys are going to pay to attract the real nice beer and wine garden folks, but on the other side, we're going to monetize the 60 to 100 vendors that sign up to bring services?
Yes. So, yes, so you would purchase their product, whoever would come out. And we basically, we have to go out there and recruit to get those vendors to come to our event.
Okay. Is there a fee for them to be there?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I assume it's going to be affordable so that we attract as many as possible?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Johns.
But there's no cut back to the city. Is that what you're trying to, there's no sharing in?
The profit.
In the profit that a vendor makes?
No, there is not.
Okay. So we pay you to get the vendor there, and they pay who to come there and set up? Like, like most of the places, they'll pay $100 for a booth. Let's, let's just say that. Is that the same type situation this is, or they just show up and sell their, their things?
No. They would have to be vetted. They would have to actually pay to be a part of our market. Yes.
So we're paying you to get those people, then they're paying you to be there?
Absolutely. Because in order to get them there, we have to do research, not research, but we have to go out there and find the vendors that you want for that type of event, for the Harvest Festival or the Music Festival, those type of vendors that fit. So there is work to be done.
Right. I understand. You've got $13,000 set up for that, right?
Say it again?
That's this vendor selection infrastructure? $13,000 line item?
That would be also setting up the venue for them. They need a venue set up to make sure tables, chairs, things of that nature.
Well, most of them bring their own.
What was that?
Well, most of them bring their own.
The way that we do our festivals, that's, that's not what they would need to do.
Okay. So you supply the chairs, the tables they need, the?
Tents, the whole lot.
Generators for power?
The generator.
That makes a difference in understanding.
Yeah, we provide all of that because we can't have 20 generators going out there, 30 generators.
That makes, that makes it a lot more understandable.
Electricity, all of that stuff goes into that.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just, I wanted to understand that part of it. That makes the number make sense.
Yeah. Johans, thank you for answering all the questions. As you can tell, we're a very inquisitive bunch, and we want to learn because when we get asked by the community, we want to make sure that we have the answers to be able to provide them as well. So we appreciate you being here and hope your better half is doing well. And, good, I'm very glad. Thank you. You know, there's been a lot of people involved in this process, you know, Dan, Bobby, Tammy, Chief, Robbie, Brian, Lisette, Keith, David, thank you guys for all of your work up until this point. Counsel, do we have a motion for this agenda item?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve as presented with the hours 11 to 5.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second, Dan.
Okay. I'm going to give that one to Councilman Lands there, and we're going to give this second to Councilman Lands. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Dan, you can take the next step here.
All right.
Thank you, guys. We're, we're very excited. Very excited.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're having me.
Drive safe. Agenda item number two, this is consideration of possible action to approve a subdivision variance request for Avalino, an approximate 49.58 acre tract of land, including land dedicated for the right of way located along the southern side of Rodeo Palms Parkway, abutting Foxtail Palm subdivision to the east PIB 69202051, seeking to vary the requirements of chapter 62, section 108b4. Lot dimensions sound to be less than 60 feet in width as of the right of way line and a depth so as to provide an area of not less than 6,300 square feet and authorize the mayor to execute the development agreement approved by PD&amp;Z on 5/12/2025. Joes?
Mayor and counsel, this is a subdivision variance request for Avalino. It's a master plan community. We already have a master plan that has been approved for this proposed development. The request is to allow measurement of the lot width at the front setback line instead of at the right of way line. So the way our subdivision ordinance is, the lot width for lots within the ETJ is measured at the right of way. And actually, the subdivision ordinance amendment that we are proposing, we are trying to change it so that it aligns with how we do it in the city limits, and that's the variance that the applicant is requesting. Staff is recommending approval. Planning and, planning development and zoning commission is recommending approval as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Joes. Any comments or questions from counsel? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
We have a motion to approve from the Mayor Protem. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Agenda item number three, this is from our public hearing. This is consideration of possible action to approve the first of two readings of ordinance 2025-0-20. Joes gave us a great presentation during the public hearing about this item. Counsel, I want to start here. I like a lot of it. The only section that I have an issue with or concerns about, I should say, and I expressed this to Dan earlier, you'll find this, if you look at the red line ordinance, it's going to be on page 33 of the red line ordinance. And it's talking about the water and the wastewater. And essentially, the way that it reads right now is that if you have a residential lot that you do not abut a right of way with existing city water line, that you may install a well.
Which one did you say? I'm sorry.
This is page 33.
There is section?
Yeah, it's going to be section 62 dot 119.
Are these numbered out at the top?
Page 33 there.
Am I on the wrong one?
So the way that it reads basically is that if you, let's say you're, you buy residential land that's not developed right now, and you abut a city right of way that has a city water line and/or wastewater line, you have to connect to it. You do not have a choice to be on your own well or your own septic. That is if the well and septic does not exist. I generally agree with that. If there's something within a certain proximity, we want people to connect. But as you look at the map where our utility lines are for water and wastewater, I have concerns with the language because, for example, if I built a home, if I bought land and built a home in the middle of Magnolia, there's, there's close, there's water along Jordan, or there's, there's nothing along Jordan right there. Or even if I, I built something, let's say, maybe a better example is along Bissell Road. So if you're looking to the west on Bissell Road, because there's technically a water and wastewater line along the Bissell Road right of way, the way I would interpret these changes is that I would have to connect, but it's not right in front of my property. So I then would have to run water and wastewater lines down to connect along the right of way. And I know that's not the intent of this. The intent is that if you have water right in front of your property, or wastewater right in front of your property, you've got to connect. But the concern that I have is that if it's along the right of way with existing, does not necessarily mean that it has to be right in front of your property. And I know, Dan, we had talked about that some. Is there a way to improve it to make sure that that's clarified? Because we don't want to have to add this huge burden to people to run lines down right of way.
Absolutely, Mayor. And so, you know, the way that it's written right now, the existing verbiage, I'm not 100% sure why it even contemplates water and sewer, other than the idea for the original Mamvel Townsite, which is just right around where we're at right now. We were seeing, this is several years ago, we were seeing folks that would come in, they bought a piece of land, and then they were learning, not only do they, you know, they've saved up enough money for their home and their detached garage and their driveway, but they had no idea that they were going to have to build half of a city street as well. It was, it was back in those days. So the idea was, well, let's, let's cordon off an area of town that can still remain as asphalt roads, still remain as open ditch and whatnot. So that's how it started, and the water and sewer was, okay, for those in the original Mamvel Townsite, because we didn't have utilities, they could have well and septic. So what we talked about at the staff level is, hey, number one, we want to expand this area because I think it's more appropriate to go to more natural boundaries, like from, from large to Lewis, and then even down to Jordan. But let's just get rid of the verbiage altogether on the, on the well and septic, because, I'm sorry, that's where I'm trying to land, Mayor, I think. I think we can actually just get rid of those two altogether, because what we don't want to do is we don't want to encourage new water wells. But if that's all you can do, then that's all you can do. So it was never an idea to try and get someone off of their water well or off of their septic system. We don't have a provision, like a lot of cities do, that if you're within 200 feet, then you have to connect. Paralinas is one. I suspect League City probably is, but a lot of cities have that. And if you're within X number of feet, then you have to connect whether you want to or not. Definitely not proposing that. I think, Joes, do you agree that we could just get rid of, what is it, three and four, I think?
Yeah. If, if the council sees value in that, the only reason why we included that was to at least have that conversation, to see if there is any interest in slowly starting to move away from well and septic towards like connecting to our public system. Now, at the Planning Development and Zoning Commission, you did, we did hear from the PD&amp;Z that there has to be allowance, at least for residential lots, that do not have a utility line in front of them, in front of their property. And that's how we got into it. But if the city council feel that being consistent in terms of water and sewer, like Dan said, with the rest of the city, taking that two section completely out would achieve that.
Thank you, Dan and Joes. My preference would be to see it taken out, because the way that it reads right now is if I lived on Bissell, if I bought land all the way to the west on Bissell, because Bissell is an existing right of way that has an existing water and wastewater line, I'd have to run hundreds of feet of line to connect, because I abut a right of way that has an existing water and wastewater. So I think having it just aligned with our normal subdivision ordinance as it relates to water and wastewater presents clarity and continuity, because this, I think it has some unintended consequences, and that would be what my preference is. But counsel, I'm open to consideration and discussion on that. Mayor Protem?
I agree. That was the one thing that didn't sit well with me when I was listening to the changes here. Personally, I don't think that if you are already here, we should have to, I don't think that language should be there, especially here in Old Town Mamvel. If you, if you can and have the means to put your own water and well in septic, I'm all for that. I want to keep rural Mamvel rural as much as possible, and if they have the opportunity, if they want to tie in and they can, let that be an option. But I do not like, hey, you have to. So I agree with Mayor.
Wait. I'm sorry, wait.
We'll go Councilman Oplager. Councilman Oplager and then Councilman Bonner.
So I'm sorry, I'm, if you're saying you live by the lot on Bissell?
Yeah, so if I?
Bissell, right here.
Right here.
Okay, you're saying over, where there is not, not existing water?
There is. So the right of way is Bissell. There's existing water and wastewater. If I bought this land down here, the way that the ordinance reads, I have, I would have to run water, I'd have to, I'd be forced to connect, because there's water and wastewater on the right of way.
Down there, though.
Yes, that I abut to. So you could, we could leave the language in, and the language could say that if there's water and wastewater that's run right in front of my property, then I have to connect.
Yes. But if it's down the road.
Which, Mayor, that's no different than anywhere else in the city, though. So that's why I was suggesting.
I beg to differ. I thought in the city, you do not have to, we have incentives to connect, but you do not have to connect to well and septic anywhere in the city. And I thought the intent was the opposite in this particular area, was that if it's there next to you, you have to connect to well and, to water and wastewater if it's running by you. And I think what the mayor is saying is, just because you're abutting a right of way where it's further down the way, what it was supposed to be, I think originally it had a 50-foot, Mayor, which probably would have cleared that up. If you're abutting it when it's there with, or within 50 foot of your lot, then I think that kind of clears up, which was our intent. It's supposed to be, if you're right next to it, water and wastewater, you're supposed to connect only in Old Mamvel Townsite.
Yeah, and that's, Bobby, I think you, you covered it there. I think that's exactly the intent, that if you have water and wastewater that's right up to your property, you need to connect to the water and wastewater. You can't install septic and well. But the way that this reads doesn't necessarily reflect that, unless, I might be interpreting it wrong.
No, it could be interpreted that way, the way you interpreted it. However, that was not the intent. The intent was if your lot has the right of way with the line in front of your property, as in if your lot is abutting a right of way, and of course, I mean, clarification could help, but the intent was that the line is in front of the right of way. But however, if you are pointing to the fact that by having this, the, the burden is different for new residential lots within the old, original Mamvel Townsite compared to the rest of the city, like Dan was saying, then Dan's proposal of removing the two section is what is going to achieve what you were suggesting.
Based off of this, Dan, I think from our conversation earlier, you know what my, my intent is behind this. What would you recommend as a city manager accomplishes what the original intent is and some of what I've expressed about the concerns?
Well, so here's, here's a third option, and exactly what we're talking about, what Bobby just said and what you just said. I think that's a good approach, but I don't know that that needs to be respective of just the original Mamvel Townsite. I mean, if we want to add that for utilities in general in the city, then we can add that. I mean, but again, the OMT, all it originally said was that you can, you can keep your well and septic. That's all it said. And so I didn't understand why that was specific to OMT and nowhere else, so.
Yeah, but back then, OMT was limited to commercial. There was zero residential.
Exactly. Exactly.
And that was why, that's why it said that. Councilman Bonner?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, in every bit of this change right now, these are all no smaller than one acre lots? Is that right?
10 acres or less.
10 acre.
So well and septic, it'll be one acre or less.
That's what I'm asking.
Then the original Mamvel Townsite, it's, it limits properties that are larger than 10 acres. So if you, if there's a tract which is being developed more than 10 acres, then it wouldn't qualify for some of the exceptions.
So a developer wanted to come in on that 10 acres, are we going to get into this half acre setup? Like, I know we've had some, some talk in the, in the Old Town Center about, because we've given a couple of variances here lately, where we allowed somebody to build on smaller than an acre, if I remember right?
So we've taken that situation out since we amended the zoning district requirements. So that, those kind of situations would arise when you have a perfect one acre lot, and as part of your development process, you have to dedicate a portion for the right of way, and now it drops slightly lower than one acre, where your well and septic can still happen, but the variance would be for the lot size for subdivision. So those situations would go away with the zoning amendment that we did in the past. So if your question is like on a large acreage, if a master plan community comes in and wants to do smaller lots, it cannot happen by default. There'll have to be an action by this council to allow for it.
Right. Because we don't want smaller lots with well and septic. They just don't work well when you get down below an acre, as far as how they impact, to me, how they impact your neighbor. So I just want to make sure they'll still have to come in for a variance if that.
Correct.
Bobby looks confused.
I mean, as long as we have something that says it's different in the Old Mamvel Town Center, that if it's, the lines are going right by your property for new construction, you have to tie on, where the rest of the city, you don't. We have incentives for the people in the rest of the city to tie on, but it's not compulsory. And I think it's different. If that's the intent, I think we still need something in here that says, and Mayor, like you said, if the wording is not quite right, or you read it wrong, we could put in the 50-foot, or we could make it, you know, where it's abundantly clear, if it's next to your lot and it's new construction, you have to tie on if you're in the Old Mamvel Townsite, which is mostly commercial. And as Dan, I don't know if he said or not, but a lot of the lines are there already. This area is the most heavily populated with line area, and I think we have in, you know, the whole town that's city, city water and sewer.
So it comes down, counsel, do you want to require in the Old Mamvel Townsite that people are forced to, or required to, I should say, connect to city water lines and wastewater lines?
Where it's available.
Where, where it's available.
Next to them.
On new, on new construction specifically, or would you prefer to allow them to continue to put in septic and wells?
If I buy an acre?
Mayor Protem?
If I buy an acre of land and it's intent for a single home, I don't want to be forced to tie in.
But if it's water, sir.
I don't care. Some people don't want to. They should be able to have the option. But if you're going to buy, that, that's where it gets sticky, is if you buy big lots with the intent to divide, multiply, divide, like develop, that's different than they should be able to. It doesn't sit well with me. That's just me. It doesn't sit well with me. That's just me. You guys can decide otherwise. That didn't sit well with me.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Bonner?
Currently, though, their incentive not to do it is cost, okay? Our, our fees are half of what they probably should be. So they're going to pay half for their well and septic system. If we up the impact fees to where, you know, they are, they're going to be paying the same thing regardless. A well and septic system is going to cost them $20,000. Or more.
I still don't like requiring them to do that. That's just.
I, I, I don't want to require anybody that's, in other words, if you owned an acre over there and you'd owned it forever and you wanted to do it, as I can see grandfathering you into that, to where you don't have to. But somebody that comes from the outside and wants to buy an acre, they know, it's just like a developer, they, they know there's going to be certain things they have to do. I see it as a little bit different than a existing property owner that decides they want to build a house on property they've owned forever.
And Councilman Bonner, to your point here, that is not reflected in this. It's the delineation is either you have existing well and septic or you don't. So even if you owned the acre already and this goes into effect, you would now be required to connect to water and wastewater. Now, this is, council, I'll remind you, this is the first of, of two readings. Is that correct, Dan? The first of two readings. So we have time over the next two weeks. I still think regardless of what we decide, we move this forward with this one reading. We can make changes tonight if council wants to make changes tonight. And then additional changes can be made between now and, and then. But it comes down to, I think, council, what do you guys, what do you guys want to do? Does someone want to make a motion to amend? Do you guys want to approve this as is? Where, where do you guys stand? What I'll do is I'll make a motion to amend to completely strike out of section 62-119, D3 and D4. We have a second for the amending motion. This is a motion to amend to strike completely section 3 and section 4 under subsection D. All those in favor of the amendment motion? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-2-0. Do we have any other comments or questions as it relates to this ordinance?
Yeah, I can just clarify that. So by, by removing that section, nothing is changing from how it is right now. Just wanted to get that out there. So right now, original Manville Townsite is only res, non-residential. Everything that was proposed to be amended applied to residential. And the only change that would happen is, there's no change, the boundary. Other than the boundary, there's no change in terms of utility connection. Non-residential development can still have a well and septic. There's no impact on residential. It's going to be just as how it is elsewhere right now.
Okay, so this now would have continuity with the rest of the city. So if anybody was developing anywhere else in the city, they would be the same as if you're in the Old Manville Townsite.
So the, and the only change is now we have a little better understanding on what y'all's preferences are on this topic.
Okay. Thank you, Joes, for that clarification. Council, do you guys have any comments or questions or any final statements? Okay, do I have a motion for this agenda item, council? We did the amending motion. Now we need a main motion to approve the ordinance as, as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
We have a motion from our Mayor Protem. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Oplager. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 7-2-0. Joes, Dan, thank you to you and your team for your work on this. Appreciate the fielding our questions and, and giving us that information. It was helpful. We'll now move on to agenda item number five. This is discussion and staff update on the following. City center project 160 acres, city facilities, chocolate bayou drainage improvements and budget timeline. Council, this was put on here to have public discourse and to work as a, as a team with, with staff discussing these items. There'll be further discussions, in-depth discussions coming up. We wanted to kind of keep these on the radar, let you guys know and let the public know where these are at, and see if there's any initial questions. So Dan, for the first one, the city center project 160 acres, can you give us an update as to where we're at on that project?
Mayor, if it, if it would be all right with you, could I do city facilities first?
Absolutely.
And there's a good reason for it. So just a quick update on, on some of our bigger projects. So the water reclamation facility, that's the project that the city borrowed $40 million to do, obviously. The, by schedule, we're about 25% complete. And by, by expenditure, we're about 13%. So it hasn't caught up with the big-ticket items yet, but we're tracking along very well. As you know, we have a full-time staff person out there supervising that project now, Ray Word. So that, that's going very smoothly, that project does. The second biggest project is the police station. I think some of y'all have had the opportunity to, to visit that facility. Chief has got the, the tour down, so if you haven't, is, is it still, is that still a possibility for them? But it has to be after a certain hour because there are so many people working in that building right now. It's really amazing. So by schedule, we're at 90%. So it's, it's quite possible that they, they could finish a little bit early on schedule. We're really, you know, we're, the idea was, was to try and be in before June 1. It's, it's real close. It's probably more like July, I guess, now. But anyway, the, the end is, is near for that project in, in the best way possible. The, obviously, the public works facility, that, that is a different story completely. That facility, you know, is sort of on hold right now. We have met with the, the Surety Company. The bonding company has been very, very helpful, very good to work with so far. We've had at least two contractors tour the site, and I think a third one I saw is going to be toured this week. So they're, they're working diligently to try and get somebody to pick up that project and, and run with it. But they've been very accessible, so far so good with, with working with them. The McCoy and Masters project, so that's the, the project that actually runs water and sewer to both of those facilities that I just talked about. It also removes the old lift station that's on McCoy, right across the street from the high school. We've always called it the Simmerhansel Lift Station. It's really a manhole with a grinder pump in it essentially, but it's technically a lift station. So that one is almost completely, completely done. That's the project, though, that, you know, we had a, a couple of change orders where we, where we, council approved adding a sidewalk on, on Lewis itself. So there's some, some improvements that they needed, obviously some, some good cleanup work that still needs to be done on Lewis. And we need to see where that sidewalk is actually going to go now that you all have approved the change order. The other big one is the elevated storage tank. I, I know the, the mayor has a really neat idea of how to, to get, get some even more excitement about that 1 million gallon elevated storage tank. We're not quite there yet, but it should be this summer, which is also good. So by schedule, we're at 91%. By, by values, we're about 83%. So thanks to Wale, Robbie, and you for putting all those updates together. So the reason, Mayor, I wanted to do those first is because the guys are very busy right now on all of these projects. So the, the two projects that don't have a specific, you know, they're, they're not completely facilitated just yet, is the city center project and then the chocolate bayou drainage improvement, so the no man's land area, if you will. So those are the two that tend to come up, you know, when, when we have our, our planning sessions. And what, what we've, the mayor and I have been talking about is, is having specific items in front of you in June. So what I need to do is get with Joe Morrow, our bond counsel, and Leah, our, she's bond counsel, excuse me. Joe is our financial advisor. Need to get with them and with Jeff and, and line out all, you know, I sent you all the, the costs, the estimated costs. It's tremendous to do, to develop city center like we want to do. But if we can phase this, and then what we really need is a recommendation on, is this, just kind of like what we talked about tonight with, with the Fall Music Fest, is this something that we can realistically handle in-house? Or do we need to have someone manage this project for us? You know, does that, does that look like a, a public-private partnership? You know, we, we just need to have that conversation. So I will, if, if that's still the, the approach that we want to take, so I'll get with them and see which meeting works better for them, the first meeting or the third meeting in June, to, to talk about the city center project. The, the chocolate bayou drainage improvements, council approved us to put together a, a grant for Texas, for TDEM, Texas Division of Emergency Management, there it is. We, we had, we had delusions of grandeur to try and get three grant applications put together. This was our first time staff putting these grants together. And the first one for the generators, which was the one that we knew we needed the most because that was a definite need. We were able to submit that one. The other two, we weren't able to, to complete in time. But literally just today, I don't know if you saw the email, they've got another opening, just like the representative said that they would. So there's already another opportunity. So if, if council's still good with that idea, which I suspect you would be, let's, let's make another, another run at that. We had actually talked, the other two grants, so one was to talk about drainage easements along chocolate bayou. So, so east of Masters and west of Uzzle. So the no man's land area is essentially what we call it. And then the other one was potentially looking at property on Mustang Bayou down at the end of Scott Street. So we've got the good bulk, Rosie, of, of the grant applications already started, obviously for the other application. So if, if we apply for this one, I mean, excuse me, if we are, if we can apply for it, if, if we're eligible, that's the word, then we can jump on those pretty quickly. So let me pause for a second. Yeah.
Lot of, lot of information. Dan, thank you for all that, all that update. If you guys, council and public, if you guys have not seen the monthly newsletter that's put out there, it contains a lot of great information that Dan just shared about our capital projects. So Dan, agree with you, Robbie, kudos to you, to Wale and the team for y'all's management of that. Rosie, I know you guys have been scrutinizing the finances too, and, and we appreciate that. I love that we have an opportunity to go after a potential other grant for the chocolate bayou drainage and some of those other drainages. Do we have a dedicated in-house employee that can pursue those for us? Because I want to make sure that this does not, because of how busy everyone is, and not saying you guys would do this, you guys are great. I love you guys, but I want to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks knowing how busy you are.
And I appreciate that, Mayor. This is definitely something, you know, there are so many grant opportunities out there. And we don't, but that is something that we're going to be asking for this year. It's a full-time, like that's literally their job, grants administrator. Our, our new emergency management coordinator, I don't know if, how many of y'all have had a chance to meet Jamie just yet. We need to get her in front of them, probably, since it's almost hurricane season. She has some experience, not, not trying to dump this on her, but she has some specific experience on, on these types of grants. So she'll be a great asset for us, too. Rosie's probably wishing we were to hire her just a pinch before we had these other grants, since she's done some of them before. But to answer the original question, Mayor, no, we don't have a full-time grants administrator.
But we do have someone with Jamie that could certainly help, knowing that she's keeping an eye on hurricane season, yeah. I would love to have her come up and give us a hurricane preparedness presentation, chief, whenever she's ready. I know she's been working on a lot there. To the, to the 160, I, I do think having that within the next agenda two is key. And, and hiring someone to do that, whether it's a public-private partnership, or even if we're, we leverage this to partner with the EDC to hire an economic development coordinator. And they're the ones that would manage this project for us, but partner with the EDC, it's, it's time for that. Dan, you guys have been doing a phenomenal job with getting us to this point, updating the plans, the phases, working through the costs. But we need to, we need to get moving on this. I know you guys want to get moving on this. We're going to need the space as the city as, as we grow. And there's a tremendous opportunity where we have a community and a council that is very open and receptive to moving this forward. And I don't want to see us miss that, that great opportunity there. So definitely, council, putting that out there, would love to, to see us consider that. And I think it would be a great asset to, to the EDC there, too. But I'll open it up to council comments and questions. Mayor Protem, I think you had your hand raised, and then we'll see who else has comments and questions.
From, for clarification purposes, when we're talking about chocolate bayou drainage improvement, we're talking about no man's land, right? What, what do we classify as improvements? What are we looking for those grants to fulfill?
So the, the first step is, you know, right now, there are no drainage easements whatsoever along chocolate bayou. So that would be the first step is to, and what is there, Rosie, 57 different parcels that we would have to work up, you know, with a surveyor, we would have to work up what those drainage easement exhibits would look like. And then, you know, the next step is, is probably having our, our land agent visit with each one of those property owners. Some will quite likely dedicate their drainage easement, some will probably protest that, you know. So it's, it's very, very difficult to put a number per square foot, so to speak, on, on what these are, it's going to take to obtain them. But the first thing is getting those exhibits together. And, and that is more of a finite number that we can get from a surveyor that says, you know, if they're X number of dollars per drainage easement, regardless of the size, you know, because they would physically have to go out there and, and survey it, traipsing along on private property, which is going to be, going to be tricky as well.
Okay, so when I had my drainage roundtable, as you can imagine, the majority of the attendees were residents from no man's land. And, you know, there's definitely the sentiment of some of them were offered, then they were able to vote, and they voted against it. And so we still have the issue, and we've been talking about this. I believe Jamie Penn said, going on 30 years. And so I imagine y'all as well, right? This council wants to move forward on getting something done, or, you know, at least figuring out some type of solution. One of the things that was brought up was, have we ever considered, or is there a possibility to reach out to the Corps of Engineers to see if they can assist with this? And that's my question. Have we ever even considered that?
It's, it's interesting. Dolores was here earlier. She might have been able to answer that question, not, not to my knowledge.
Is it illegal, or is there anything that would prohibit them from partnering with us? Because.
I think it has to be jurisdictional, court jurisdictional for them to get involved. And that's something, something you don't always want, because then you can't even de-snag it without getting their permission. And once they have control of it, it's not necessarily beneficial to the city. So I don't know. I think it would be something that, only if it's a court jurisdictional. I don't know if it means, I think it's a little bit more than a navigational stream. The Corps was actually getting very aggressive as to talking about what was under their jurisdiction and waters of the US. You might have read about that, that they were being very aggressive in what they considered under their jurisdiction. And that was limiting people being able to do ponds and, and all that kind of stuff.
Bobby, I think, Bobby, I think you were probably the only one that read that, so.
He said, you may have read that, maybe. Well, the, so, but it still remains that there's this issue, right? And from my understanding is we've had all of the different organizations, CNR3, Drainage District, the Brazoria County, everybody trying to figure out a solution. And one of the consensus was that there's really no solution because of where it is. And because of where it is and the way the water travels, that even if we make these improvements, we might find slight improvements, but ultimately, they're going to continue to have this issue. So the other backup question to that is, if we get these grants or we do make these improvements, like what type of improvements are we even looking at? Because I would love to see whatever it takes at this point.
Sure. I mean, the, the ultimate improvement is, is to get access to the bayou itself, just like we have along, you know, through Pomona. Pomona is a great example, if, if you, if you saw what it used to look like compared to what it looks like now. Sedona Lakes as well. So it, the first thing is getting access through there. And then, like Bobby mentioned, you know, you, you have to de-snag. So if, we, we ran a drone in that area not too long ago. And the, the number of trees that are just over, you know, across the creek and whatnot, that are just completely blocking up drainage from leaving Manville at all, you know. Every 75% or so of our city, or at least 50% of our city leaves, drainage-wise, leaves through chocolate bayou. And it's, it's basically blocked at the southern end of our, of our jurisdiction. So it doesn't just impact them, it impacts everyone upstream of them, too. So now what we can't do is just remove all the, all the trees, remove all the debris, and then cut it back, you know, X number of feet, and then just run drainage water south of town and just let it be somebody else's problem. Obviously, we can't impact people downstream. So what, what has to happen is it basically serves as inline detention, which is exactly what Pomona and Sedona Lakes and those areas do. So we can't do anything, you know, right now, there, there is not a single drainage district that has responsibility over that area. It's 640 acres, it's a, a square mile, it's a section of, of property that has no drainage district. Now, they don't pay any taxes to a drainage district either. I've heard for years, you know, people would get frustrated that the county's not doing anything. That's not really the county's job either, you know. I mean, they're in our city limits. The tricky part is, you know, the, we don't do, the city doesn't do that kind of drainage. You know, we clean out storm sewers and, you know, we, we don't have de-snagging equipment and those kind of things. So were it not for a grant, I don't, I don't think there's any way that the city of Manville could do anything at all. But we could get easements, we could do the effort to figure out, you know, literally, and that could be partnering with drainage districts then, once we have the easements, to partner with them, to de-snag it and to get, get the, the banks peeled back where they can actually hold some water, convey water as well. That's all, you know, and we, we worked shop this last year. That was, that was something that, that council said, the, the idea of just not doing anything was not appealing to council. So, yeah, so if, if we're going to do something, then we're going to do it. We're going to, we're all collectively going to get a lot of phone calls and emails. There's, there's no way around that.
Well, and I think, Mayor Protem, so what we know is the county is currently doing a de-snagging process along the bayou, basically up to our city limits. Because that's within their jurisdiction, it's not within a city's jurisdiction. So we're going to see downstream improved, we're seeing developers improve upstream.
But not here.
It's clumping right there. And if we, if we can get the easements, if we can pull back the banks a little bit, make some improvements, protect the integrity of the, the trees and the beautiful nature that's there, what that will then allow us to do is to improve the roadside ditches, find ways to get the water back there out of the ditches, you know, Terry Paner emails all the time because his home floods, because everything else is backed up. His home sits low, so all of the water just comes and sits there. Well, if we can get the bayou moving better, we can then move the water off of the streets, off of the properties back there. But it starts, it starts with the bayous. And right now, we just, we don't have, don't have that land.
Well, thank you for, for keeping that in mind, that we did say if we're going to do something, we need to do something. We can't just keep telling them, sorry, you're part of no man's land. They pay taxes, they're residents, they've lived here for 20, 30 years. And I do think it's, it's about time we start looking for the options. So thank you for doing that.
Good question, Mayor Protem. Any other comments or questions before we go on to the last bullet point? We're almost done.
What?
Almost done.
We're done.
All right. Well, thank you, Dan, for all of that. I know, the under didn't win. The, the over-under was on eight o'clock, so. Pink squad is winning. All right, Dan, budget timeline, how are we?
Yes, sir. So just like last year, you'll be seeing one of these very soon. I think Rosie's waiting on the, the information, or Tammy, both, oh, anyway, we're all waiting on the information from the county, which kind of sets everything. But the, the punchline, I guess, for us, right? But the punchline, I guess, for us right now is mid-June is when we'll start seeing the budget, the department budget presentations again. You've already seen sort of a glimpse of public safety. That wasn't the budget presentation, but just sort of a precursor of, hold on to your hats, right? Now they'll have a big building, so now he's going to want to fill it, right?
Is that the whole of it?
Yes, exactly.
Reminds me, Dan, here's the church, here's the people. You've got to open it up.
Yeah.
It's for the police department now.
Exactly. So anyway, this will be coming here pretty soon. I know Rosie and Tammy are both ready to get it out. I talked to Blake today as well. So we have the format, we're ready to go, we just need the dates to fill in, so.
Perfect. Council, any comments or questions about that? Mainly, just wanted you guys to be prepped. We're going to start getting the presentation soon. Team's been putting a lot of work into it. We're excited to see what each department has to present. And then, Dan, you've got to make the tough decisions, so it's all up to you.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes, Mayor Protem?
Last year, we were talking about the homestead exemption, and I vaguely remember Manager Dan leaving a little red. And Rosie, like, we just lost a million. But it seems like it forced creativity to come from that, and we were able to manage quite well. Yes? I see smiles, mostly. Robbie doesn't look too thrilled.
He's like, "I'm good."
So I just want to know that we did make the right decision, even though we pulled from the budget so that we could allocate that towards our very first homestead exemption, that we were not severely under budget or didn't really impact us in the grand scheme of things?
I think we were able to overcome. I mean, obviously, it impacted some of the things that we wanted to accomplish because the facilities were under construction anyway. I think we were able to hold off, but those needs that you saw last year, they didn't go away, they're just, they're probably going to be expanded in some cases, so. But absolutely, I mean, you know, this council's approach to grants, you know, completely different than it's been in the past. So, you know, we're already seeing the fruits of that labor. So I would agree with that, you know, as far as looking for other ways, for sure.
Good. So I just want to give you kudos for that because y'all were very scared when we adopted that. And I'm like, "I trust y'all." So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, we'll move on here to Mayor and Council comments. Any Council comments? Two comments that I have, we have a runoff election. Voting starts on May 27th, so that's here in, I guess, technically, seven days now because we're almost at the end of today. I believe, Tammy, the only place to vote is going to be at the Manville Annex. It's from the 27th until June 3rd, 8 till 5, and then June 7th from 7 to 7. Want to encourage people to get out there and vote. Dan, if we could also, just wanted to make, state this publicly, if we could get an update on the inter-local agreement from the county? I know that we've been waiting, we were told that some of the repairs to Dogwood were going to happen in the spring. I know that's shifted a little bit, so kind of seeing where we're at on that and the, yeah, if you have one now, and kind of, if you have one, you know, the feathering there, plus we have our other ILA that's, you know, we all pay county tax dollars, and the county's been working with us, Commissioner Linder, Matt Hanks, Commissioner Cade. I get asked probably about once every few weeks, "Hey, where are we at? What are we doing with this?"
Sure. I don't have, and we've asked for an update as well from the county on the improvements to last year's ILA projects. Haven't got that answer yet, other than when they come to the city to do this year's projects, that's when they would do it, which makes sense. Equipment's going to be right here. And Robbie, you just visited with them last week?
Last Thursday. And I talked to Mike Blitzy, and he let me know that it'll be like middle of August before they get out to execute the ILA.
Okay. And that's the ILA that we approved for this fiscal year? That's not the repairs?
The one for this year, yes.
Okay.
But as I said, so then Matt Hanks had told me that the plan is whenever they bring all that equipment, because that's when they're going to do it. They're not going to bring the equipment up, apparently, to just do it for the improvements, or, excuse me, the repairs. That would have been nice. But, yeah, so whenever they're in town, and we always know it's in the summer, we know what it looks like when we try and do asphalt roads and it's not nice and hot outside. We've seen that firsthand, right? So, yes, so we will see them in August. Now, these roads, just a refresher, are on the south side of town this time.
Yes.
So do you recall?
It's going to be Alleluia Trail, Kirchner, I think Burnett, and Part of Stevens, I believe.
And I'm assuming here we'll be able to make some final decisions on our Phase 3 of roads, speaking of our roads, coming up here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I know that's going to be a big budget implication heading into the budget year, so if we could get that squared away in June, that would be amazing. I appreciate y'all's work. Robbie, thank you for having that conversation with them last week, and look forward to seeing that come through there. Council?
Oh, I'm sorry to touch my nail.
No, you're...
One thing I want to say, I'm assuming somebody in your crew did the cleanup around Public Works site, and that looks so much better.